What's his name? It's Mr. Carroll. It's Mr. Carroll out there. Will you have him to come up to the podium, please? You see him?
This time I'd like to call the regular Anderson County Council meeting of August 7th to order. I'd like to welcome each and every one here and thank y'all for coming. We got a lengthy agenda tonight, so we're gonna try to get through this. Apologize, we having some difficulty with the lights, I apologize for that, but I think we can get through it. What it is, and so this time I'll ask you to go here just in time to lead us in our invocation, I pledge allegiance, Councilman Wilson. We all rise, please.
May we pray. Precious heavenly Father, Maker of heaven and earth, thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon our bountiful land. We ask your divine wisdom and guidance and grace on our proceedings here tonight. And as always, we ask your divine protection on those who serve in the field. To keep this country safe and free. In Christ's precious holy name I pray. Amen.
Laid legates to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, are there any approval of a minutes of a July 10th meeting? Are there any corrections to be made to that? Ms. Floyd? That was a miss asking her to hand her something, but it wasn't shepherd her, so it's miss, I don't know what is that word, we can go back and look and see. Motion to, uh... Make motion to accept the, are there any other corrections to be made? Make motion to accept the minutes with the correction, try to get the wording right on page, what page is that, Ms. Wilson, oh, Ms. Floyd? Page eight? Try to get through it, have a second. Take Mr. Allen. I'll infer the motion, show hands. Pose light sign, so the motion carries. Moving on now to citizens' comments, number four. This time, Mr. Harmon, our county attorney, for ones who don't, he'll call your name. Ones wishing to speak, come up. You have three minutes. Address the chair, and you have, keep the items on the first go around. First part of the meeting, on items to send on our agenda. As I talked to Reverend a few minutes ago, anyone wishing to speak on the zoning issue, that's a public hearing by itself, you don't have to sign up for it. We ask for you to come up and line, uh, hit it, take your time. Mr. Harmon?
Mr. Chairman, first speaker is Frank Presley.
Frank Presley, this is for, I'm speaking to item number 15, and since Mr. Graham's not here, I guess I'm speaking on deaf ears here, but... Criminal justice coordinating council data overview stepping up initiative resolution 2018 should be attached. Data-driven justice initiative letter attached. That doesn't tell me a whole lot. Now, what I'm interested in is the progress that we're making with jail. What's happening with that, that's kind of, it was on the hot seat subject there for a while. But now that it's gotten kind of quiet, we haven't heard too much more about it. I'd be interested in finding out where we're at with the jail, and if we're considering a prison farm, or if there's any progress towards that. I'd like to hear something more about that from Mr. Graham. I don't know if he'll be here or not, but thank you.
Harmon. Mr. Chairman, next speaker is Amber McGraw.
Okay, he's fine.
Next is Kelly Gray.
That's fine, no problem at all.
Cody Gray.
That's fine.
Carrie Strathern.
Thank.
Corinne Wallace Fox.
Thanks.
Not sure I'm saying this one right. Clam Capel? Claire Capel.
Thanks.
Michael Aquilago? Karen DeCarlo? Carol Overman.
Is that it?
Just signed up.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. I'm in five, we have no ordinance of third reading. Ordinance number 6A, ordinance second reading. Ordinance authorized in amendment of Anderson County ordinance 2014-040. Certain limited regards in particular. Mr. Nelson's not here, this is second reading, we have motion move this forward. Mr. Allen, have a second.
Second.
Miss Wilson, any discussion? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Harmon, can?
Yes, yes, ma'am, Ms. Floyd. What this ordinance does is add the official legal company name to the fee agreement for this project. It only had in the project originally, the doing business as, DBA name of Fox Farms. And this will add the legal name of the company to the documents.
Anyone else? I'll infer the motion, show hands. Like I said, motion carries nationally. We know the aisle number 6B, 2018-025, ordinance authorized to sell a certain property in Clemson Research Park. Went to lease agreement between Anderson County Sackline and Anderson County Development Partnership. This is the second reading, this is selling, allowing, we have no choice in the group to sell the property upon the research, the research property. We have motion move this forward. Mr. Wilson, have a second. Mr. Allen, any discussion? Ms. Floyd?
Would you please, again, just go over the top of this, so that the people that are with us tonight can understand what we're talking about?
It's like I said earlier in our statement, this is allowing, giving up the okay, innovate Anderson, to sell the property of Clemson Research property on Highway 187 north. Giving them the right to sell that property. Fair enough, Mr. Harmon?
Yes, that's exactly what is happening. The lease agreement that, under which the county held the property, requires us to return it to them upon request. And they have requested that the council do that.
Thank you.
I'll infer the motion. Pose, so motion carries nationally. Moving on, item 6C, 2018-030, ordinance ordering referendum to determine whether South Line Department revenue may issue temporary permits to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcohol, liquors by the drink, bona fide, nonprofit organizations, business establishments authorized to be licensed for consumption on premises sales. Till that a sale of beer, wine, at permitted premises, location of dart, dart, without regard to the days or hours of sale. Mr. Graham brought this forward, he can't be here tonight, he's out of town. This is second reading, this is to put on the ballot. This is to be put on the ballot. Mr. Harmon, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Mr. Chairman, the document that is before you contains the two ballot questions that state law allows us to put on the ballot. ballot questions that state law allows us to put on the ballot. Uh, I did, um, modify, uh, a couple of items in this ordinance to correct some typos, and to make the first where asked provision track state law, and I'll, I'll hand that up.
You said to correct some?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. See, Mr. Graham brought this forward, he can't be here tonight, so I entertain it on the floor, we have a second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Wilton, any discussion?
Mr. Harmon?
Yes, ma'am. The, uh, the, this thing tonight is just to correct the, um, errors, misspellings, and things that were in the first one, that's all this is for?
Uh, that's the only changes that I made in it. There were no changes made to the, to the two ballot questions that will be on the ballot, uh, in November.
Okay, but this is also not the wording for what's going to be on the ballot as well, is it?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
These are the two exact, precise questions that will be on the ballot in November.
Okay, alright, I got it, I got it, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, show your hands. All opposed, abstentions? So the motion carries, Mr. Allen, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Wilson in favor, Ms. Floyd, it's staying. Moving on now, number 7A, 2018-026, ordinance permitting zoning map, three zone, plus or minus 3.86 acres from RA Residential Agriculture to R-M1, which is mixed residential district at 1226 Massey Road. This time I'd start to party to come forward and give us a, uh, forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, this request is to rezone, uh, the property at 1226 Massey Road from RA Residential Agriculture to RM1, our mixed residential district. Uh, the purpose of the request is to provide a group home care, group care home, excuse me, uh, for pregnant women. Uh, staff recommended approval, uh, the zoning advisory group, um, did not meet, they, they could not make a quorum, so they did not meet, so the, uh, technically comes forward from the zoning advisory group as a, as a recommendation for approval, and then finally the planning commission, uh, recommended approval on their meeting of July 9th.
Thanks, Mr. Park, appreciate it. This time we're into a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak to this matter, one way or another, step forward, state your name, district, address the chair, please. I'm sorry. I already talked to him. Anyone wishing to step forward, just come on down, state your name. Right in that microphone.
Okay, I'm Tia Dooley, I'm a resident at 1221 Massey Road, and, uh, I'm against rezoning that 3.87 acres, um, and I know there's several here, uh, we live right there at that road, within feet, and we're totally against rezoning.
Okay.
I'm married three.
Get that microphone for her, Mr. Park. You fine?
Yes, I'm married three, and I live at 1226, which that road would go right in front of my house, and I'm just not for this. I just don't think this is the right place for this type of home. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carrie Strathern, I live at 2208 East North Avenue in Anderson, and I'm in support of the home, I think it's a worthy cause.
Thank you.
Erin DeCarlo, I live at 2212 East North Avenue in Anderson, I'm support of the home. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Overman, I live at 116 Woodbridge Court in Anderson, and I also am in support of this.
Thank you.
My name is Amber McGraw, and I reside at 108 Way, which is about 100 yards from Massey. Um, I do have a copy of all the emails and information that was sent over, if you guys want to do this, this has roughly 20, oh, I'm sorry, it has roughly 20 people in our neighborhood, um, that communicated that they are not in favor of this moving in, um, and the reason why specifically for me is that I grew up in this area, I've lived in this area for 20 years, a year out of college, I bought a house in this area, I went to Ren High School, I played on the soccer team, I remember what it looked like when I moved here, um, and I'm sure you guys are aware of what's happened to Greenville, what's happened to, I mean, my gosh, Little Pattersville, it's growing, um, and I know that this is only three acres, however, I feel like that's just, um, a doorway into more rezonings. Um, I do support the mission, I don't support the area, um, I just don't think it's a good place, you're smacked up in the middle of a neighborhood, um, and so for that, I am against the rezoning of Massey Road, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please ask the, um, the speakers to please speak a little louder, so we can hear you?
Go ahead, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
We only heard a bit of what she said. Okay, so please speak up louder, so we can.
Uh, we got it. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rich Strout, I live at, uh, 110 McBree Lane, which is just in the Massey subdivision, not more than 200 feet from where this proposed unit is going in. I have about three or four things to say about it, the nearest hospital is 30, 30, at least 30 minutes away. Uh, they're with the St. Francis Hospital, there's, there, there is no emergency care, uh, in this area to put at-risk pregnant women, uh, in this area. Uh, number two, once you rezone this particular three acres, uh, with the M1 designation, what else will this move into the area? This has been a residential agricultural area for all of its existence, slab tone is historic. Uh, as soon as you make part of it, M1, other people will be coming in to make other parts of it, M1. Uh, why do you want to spoil the RA designation for this property, just to, you know, and it's, it's putting a, an area that is not supported well by, uh, by services, and you're putting at-risk pregnant women in this house with the nearest hospital 30 to 40 minutes away? Thank you.
I'm Cody Gray, I live at 105 McBree Lane, it's also part of the Massey Estates neighborhood, right up the road from the guy that just spoke, uh, I am against the rezoning, uh, one of my biggest things is, just like he said, the closest hospital who they have a partnership with is St. Francis. I actually looked it up, it's 27 minutes from our area to St. Francis, so, in any type of emergency, I mean, how are they actually gonna get there for the help for kids, or, you know, a pregnant woman? Also, in their mission statement, they're talking about these ladies being able to get back on their feet in the workforce or school, the closest high school for any, you know, woman that may be 18 years of age or younger is eight minutes, so that's a 16-minute round trip just to get to school, and, you know, the closest college is Greenville Tech, it's 25 minutes to Greenville Tech, I'm currently pursuing my education farther, so I'm, you know, I'm going to Greenville Tech multiple times a week, and I know the stress it puts on myself, so I can only imagine, you know, a pregnant woman that's going through a crisis, trying to get back in school, oh, you know, I feel like something like this is better suited for a city environment where they're able to, you know, walk to work, the closest places we have around us to work is a convenience store and a Dollar General, so that's another thing on their mission statements, trying to get women back in the workforce, there's nowhere to work around our area, I mean, it's a residential, you know, we have to go out of town in a sense to be able to go to work each day, so if they're trying to put somebody back into work, I just don't see our area being the correct place for that. Another thing I got, is I was looking on their website, and their journey, they said, we have met with architects and have the first draft of renderings for the home, we have searched to, for land in the Greenville area for this home, we have issued a letter of intent to purchase approximately two acres of the land near the St. Francis Hospital. That's on their website, we're not St. Francis, we're not two acres right beside the hospital, so if they're saying that on their website, their donors who, you know, give money expect, hey, these, these ladies are from the hospital, they're in a city environment, so they're telling their donors, hey, we're doing this, but yet, they're 25 minutes from there, so if they're telling their donors that, what aren't they telling us? Thank you, guys.
Hey, guys, okay, just stop me if you can't hear anything, um, but I just want to do a little bit of an introduction, my name is Claire Capel, and I live currently in Greenville, South Carolina, and I'm speaking with Michael, um, for the home with the diocese. So, just a little bit of a background, I grew up in Greenville, and I've lived there for the past 16 years of my life. Since living there, I have learned how we're supposed to take care of those who are less fortunate than, than us, and through growing up in this great environment, I had a dream, whenever I was in sixth grade, so this was about, um, if I do the math, 12 years ago, so almost half of my life, I had a dream where I woke up and I, or in the dream, I saw the effects and the horrors that abortion causes, and so I woke up from the dream, I talked to my mom, and together we decided, we can't just sit there waiting for something to happen, these women are going through crisis pregnancies right now, and we have to do something about it. So that led to the formation of a walk, in which all the proceeds went to Birthright, the local pro-life agency, and then years down the road, I had another dream, and in this dream, there was a home, and it was as if God was saying, this is the next step, this is what you need to do, this home is what's going to help those women who have no place to turn to because their family has kicked them out, this is the solution. So, from that dream, I woke up again and talked to my mom again, um, because, you know, most people don't really listen to a person in eighth grade at that point, um, and that small group led to an even larger group, and that larger group led to an even larger group, and that was six years ago, and then whenever this land and this beautiful home popped up, it was as if all of our dreams, every hope that we had had, was answered just by looking at it, and for the people who haven't seen it, I mean, heck, I would move in there, this place is beautiful, it's on 100 acres, it's, um, it has so much land for the women, and one of our major goals, whenever we were going through the whole process, was we want something that these women, it's not an institution, it's not a hospital, somewhere that they can live and they can feel as though they're at home themselves. And so, this, this decision not only affects just one family moving in there, but has the potential to affect thousands of potential lives that could be helped by doing this, so thank you so much.
I'm Karen Wallace Fox, I live at 133 McAllister Drive, Pendleton, South Carolina, and I am in support of Claire's house.
My name is Michael Ecolino, and I'm here on behalf of the Diocese of Charleston, um, and so, obviously, the home is named after Claire in her dream, that's why it's referred to as St. Claire's Home, um, and I'm just gonna go through a quick, a few quick things. First, the property we selected, and I know the concerns about it being in a residential area, one of the reasons we picked it was because it was on 105 acres, and we imagined that buffer being an important part of the rezoning, and part of the women having the scenic, um, serene pregnancy, time in their pregnancy, and so, that plus the, uh, there's also a radio tower nearby that's on a substantial amount of property, that's also another buffer, um, and we're only rezoning the 3.8, I believe it is, or 3.7 acres, we're not rezoning the 105, because we're not looking to do anything, there will be no growth on this property, the home is perfect as is, we're only doing two things with the property upon the sale, fixing the front gate and making it nicer, stronger, and then adding a fence in front of the pool, so any children that were there do not go in the pool unexpectedly, so, the home is perfect, we don't need to do anything to it, um, and we, we looked at a lot of homes, and I really appreciate the comments about the website, I will definitely email someone about that tonight, um, this has been a six-year process, and that was what they were doing six years ago, but unfortunately, uh, for a number of reasons, that didn't occur, and so we've been for the last five and a half years, uh, looking at properties and fundraising, and the goal was actually to put them in a rural community, uh, which is what we have found here. Um, the women in the home, I know there's been some discussion about that, the women are pregnant, um, we're not taking in anybody, just anybody, they have to be, you know, stable, they can't come in as drug abusers or alcoholics, um, we can't risk the life of the other mothers in the home or the employees, um, and then I want to add this too, the company that we're working with, so, we're the Catholic Church that's gonna be purchasing the property, but we're partnering with an organization that's based out of Hoboken, New Jersey, that does this only, this is only what they do, they have seven homes, three of which were in New York, outside of the city, in the, in the boroughs of New York, they've never had any issues with law enforcement in the 33 years in all seven homes, and they even have a home similar to this that is on three and a half acres in Alabama, again, no issues in their 33 years. Um, and then, I think that's everything I have, if there's any questions you have particular to the property, though, I'd be the one that could help answer them for you, so please let me know if I can answer anything for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kelly Gray, I reside at 105 McBree Lane, um, I am not in favor of this, now, I want to start off by saying, I am in favor of their mission and their cause, I just don't believe that, I would, I would prefer it not be directly in front of my neighborhood, and directly two houses in front of me. Um, my sister, one of the ones earlier, you said you couldn't understand, she actually lives in my neighborhood, and her and I have grown up here for 20 years, and we love it, we love it just the way it is, we don't want to see anything change, you know, we like it just the way it is, and she's even closer to that, so, me personally, as her older sister, I don't want that closer to her, you know, nothing against these women, I believe in their cause, and I believe they need a place, but I believe that that could be sought and found somewhere else, I don't want that anywhere near where I live, I was like, you know, personally, that, I just don't want to see it changed, I don't want to see anything changed from the way it is, you know, like she said, I'm afraid of things, you know, continuing down the road and being, you know, once again, looked at and reevaluated to change into something else, so, personally, right now, I'm not in favor of this being approved, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dwight DeCarlo, I live at 2212 East North Avenue, and, uh, I just don't, I can't understand, I've never heard of young, pregnant women being a threat to the neighborhood, I just haven't, has there been any studies? Uh, I'm sure there's homes all over the United States just for this purpose, has anyone done a study to see what the impact is, and I bet you'll find that there's a positive impact, not a negative impact, it's a Christian thing to do. Thank you.
My name's Jim Thompson, I'm from 841 Worley Street in Pendleton, uh, I grew up in a, uh, mixed, uh, residential rural neighborhood, and I have found it to be a wonderful experience and a great way to grow up, and I think this would be a great opportunity for the pregnant women who need it.
My name's Freddie Bryant, 1479 Massey Road, I guess I got a lot of questions for, what kind of shelter is this, is it just pregnant women, are they battered women, alcoholic, what are we dealing with, you know, and will there be security, you know, are those people gonna be leaving, what are they doing, do? And I know it's about getting them jobs and pregnant women having babies, where, where do those babies go? And, uh, there's a short lot of questions to be answered, to what happens to these people when they leave there, and I don't want it.
And we own the property, I'm Kim Bryant, but we own the property right in front of it.
And I own some behind it, too, that joins it, 42 acres behind it joins it.
Have a lot of questions about what's going on, uh, if I can say they have a dream.
Well, I have a dream, and I got it, it's 15 acres, 40, I don't want my, to be punished, I don't want my dreams to be, uh, not come to fruition, uh, we own a lot of land over there, um, I own 16, um, studios, have an arena, um, the hope that, the women, hope that this place will bring her home, bring her family.
I just think that there's other places that you can put this, um, I'm sure the county government plan that they could buy that is already done for this, I just don't have any understanding of why you would put it in a I just don't have any understanding of why you would put it in a rental place, and it affects us, Massey Road, not those guys over there at St. Francis. Um, you know, I don't, I'm an adopted child, so I understand what they're saying, but still, I really have a lot of regrets coming. Their choice, everybody makes choices, and I just don't think that for their choice, what they've done, that they should be, or that I should be. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Claudia Perez, I live in 113 Flyaway, and I'm totally against it. Um, reason is, I actually moved in, moved from New Jersey to New York, to over here to be calmed, peaceful, away from the city, then you're bringing the city to us again, you know, like, that's how I feel. I have a five-year-old, he had a little accident, but I'm totally against it. I bought a house for the reason to be calm, I don't want no cars passing fast and all that, that's why we're away from the road. So, dead end, no cars go through there, that's in a main street, so I'm totally against it. I support whatever you want, as long as they're close to the city, but I don't support it close to residential homes like we are right now. We actually moved in for that reason, it's a residential home, it's a family home where you have fun and you enjoy your kids walking down the street, you have paramedics running around up and down, I've been there, done that, have a five-year-old likes going across the street to play with his friends, back and forth, what happened if, fine B, somebody does a U-turn right there, going on an emergency to take a woman to the hospital, which is twenty-five minutes away, twenty-seven minutes away, like everybody's saying, and my kid definitely across the street. Now, I know that, I'm a plumber, I've been in rehab centers here, too, so I know how it goes. So, I'm totally against that, I'm sorry. Support them, but I don't support the way where they're actually building it, too.
Okay.
My, my name is Katie Milani. I live in 113 Flyaway, thought is my husband, we have a five-year-old and a sixteen-year-old, we have animals in the house, we have, um, you know, it's, it's our little family, okay? Like he said, we just, we chose this area over, a little bit over two years ago because it was just perfect to raise our kids. It's nice, it's quiet, it's simple, it's safe. I don't, I don't agree with putting a business really so close, like, it's just a couple houses up the street from me, and I don't agree with this. I, I, I'm with the cause, I, I actually think it's really cool if people do, you know, do this for this, they need women, but I don't want them close to my house. I could've chosen any other house close to the street, I mean, close to the city, but we chose this one because it was away from everyone, from everybody else, all the traffic, although, you know, it's just not what we want. And I, like everybody else said here, I want my kids to live here after we're gone, and that's not gonna happen if there's businesses in this area, so, please, I don't want it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We got those already spoke, haven't you? We, yeah, now, we had to let people speak, they hadn't spoke.
I'm Seth Thompson, back is my wife, we're at 1460 Massey Road, we're not in favor of this. We've started our dream five years ago, actually, seven years ago, buying that piece of property. We have seventy-five acres. A lot of that property joins that hundred acres. Now, are they gonna fence that whole hundred acres? We trail ride horses, we have horses up in the front of our property, I do hunting back there, I mean, and they say they want people, the, the women, to, to have that serene feeling where they can walk through the woods, and I'm all in favor of that. There's plenty of property out here in Anderson, not, not far from town here. It's not safe, the neighborhood behind that hundred acres, it's, y'all need to ride through it. It's, it's not, it's not a favorable, favorable place for a place like this, for a women's home, it, it's not the place. I'm totally in favor for that, I have a daughter right here, she ever got in trouble, I would want her to have a place for her to go to if me and my wife couldn't give it to her. Where it's at, where you wanna put it, not the place. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to say, we have, you know, that's a liability issue, we hunt on that property, it backs right up to that hundred acres, we trail ride our horses, have horses in pastures, what happens if those women, what happens if they get out or they're, you know, they're wanting to do, whatever? I mean, that's a liability issue, and it's, and it decreases the property value having a business that close. Thank you.
I'm Joanna Strathern, I live at, um, 2208 East North Avenue, and I am for the women's home. Um, I, there seems to be some confusion about what this home is, it is a home, there are residents just as these people in the neighborhood are, it's not a business, the women are not prisoners, it's not, they're not going to get out and cause trouble, they are living in a safe place, just as you are, and I think that we should give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dennis Kindl, I live at 1527 Massey Road, got ten or twelve acres, right down below this place, forty something acres that borders the backside of it, um, we got two lots on 88, which
Y'all, y'all already had y'all's turn, we can't go over everybody who's speaking two or three times, but I think what y'all, we heard y'all loud and clear, uh, anyone else wanting to speak to this? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Before we close, put a hand.
Mr. Chairman, before you close it, the lady whom we could not hear, when she first started, I would like for her to, to maybe to come back, so
Okay, let her come back on up here, let Ms. Floyd hear what she got to say, she didn't hear him.
No, we can't hear you. I think it's something wrong with that mic, mister, uh
You have to get real close to it.
Yeah.
Did you have him sort of here?
Yeah.
Everybody else, yeah, uh-huh.
Give her that right, left, step right there. Everybody else, man, to get through, I don't think it's the mic.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, my name is Amber McGraw, and I reside at 103 Solilway, which is the first house on the left as you come into the neighborhood, um, which is roughly about fifty to a hundred yards to the driveway. As I mentioned earlier, can you hear me? Can you still hear me? Okay. Um, as I mentioned earlier, I grew up in the area, I've been here for roughly twenty years. Um, I bought my first home a year out of college in Massey Estates. Um, you talk about living your dream, and I, like I said, I've grown up in this area, I love this area. Um, the point I made earlier was that we are not against the cause, um, and I think it's important to say that just because we're against it moving in the neighborhood, isn't to say that we're for abortion, um, or against them in a whole, it's just against them coming into our neighborhood, which is primarily a neighborhood of kids. I mean, just last night, I hung out with my neighbor Derek, and my brother-in-law helped to build his trampoline. And I just think it's important to point out that, you know, although it is only the three acres, um, look at what's happened to Anderson, look at what, I mean, my goodness, look at what's happening to Greenville and Powdersville. When I moved here twenty years ago, it was just, um, a CVS and a Waffle House, and now it's booming. Um, so, in conclusion, we are not against, um, your dream or your mission, we're not for abortion or for abandoning women that are in a crisis pregnancy. We are, in fact, against just moving that type of, um, dream to our neighborhood, where we have made, um, our financial and emotional dreams come true by buying a home. Um, so, that is all I have to say, but I am against them coming to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else hasn't spoken? Anyone else? You seen them put a hand, be closed, counsel?
Yes. I have, um, I have several, a lot of questions. Um, first of all, the, um, the thing that was supposed to have happened, and I don't understand why it did, um, uh, you folks were supposed to have had a hearing with the people chosen for the, some kind of committee, you were supposed to have gone, but I saw where they couldn't get enough people to come and sit while you talk to them. So, you couldn't do that. So, here you are now, you come to council, and we're glad to see you. Anytime we can get anybody to come here, we're glad to see you. But the thing is, I know very little about this, it was just like, I came to the meeting tonight, and here we all are, but we don't know what's going on, there are two sides, and, and, and we don't know just what's going on, but my heart is breaking because this is the kind of thing that will break up a fine community where, um, uh, you have differences of opinions, and that's fine, um, and you've had a chance to say how you felt. Did y'all realize you had no time limits to the speaking? Y'all didn't know that? Well, anyway, you could've talked as long as you want to have, because there was no time limits to this, so that you can get out your feelings, you could express exactly how you feel about this. But now, uh, I have questions like, um, there was a man that spoke who said that he was told that they would not rezonate the property for him. I would like to have talked to him some more, I wanna know about, uh, the hospital closest was May, was it Mary Frances Hospital closest to them? Is that right? May France, what is it, Mary Frances? Oh, St. Francis, okay. Okay, I would like to know about that, was their property closer that could have been used for this thing? Uh, also, I would have liked to, um, um, found out from the lady, I think that she and the man from Charleston, there was a man from Charleston, there was a pretty young lady that stood and said that she was the one that had all the dream, you know, about this thing, I'd like to have talked to her some more, it's just not enough information. Uh, what I'd like to see happen is that we start from the top, again, everybody go back to, um, that board, and, uh, and do the meeting like it was supposed, it was some reason why they could not get a quorum. Did I say that right? There was some reason you couldn't get a quorum that night, and I wonder why? That, that was how the whole thing was set up, you go, you talk to these people, uh, recommended by your council member in your community who know all the details, and then after you talk to them, both sides, then it comes to council, and we listen to it from a perspective of people from that area. But I would like to see it start all over there. Uh, if I had to figure this out on a winner or a loser, I couldn't do it, I, it's just not enough information.
Ms. Allen, you, you, no.
Yeah, I have, I have about a half a dozen short questions, can you hear me okay? All right, um, let me, just so that I'm clear, this, this total area is a hundred acres, correct, but you're only gonna rezonate 3.86, okay? Um, there's already a house on the property, correct? Someone's been living there, have they? Okay, all right. Um, how many, how many pregnant women can this house hold? Eight, max. Okay. Is there a Mr. Kozak or Mr. Abel's here? They, they are large property owners on the backside, I noticed in the map here, I didn't, unless I missed the name, I didn't hear them speak, I don't know what their feeling is on it, that was my only question, but if they're not here, we'll let that go. How long will the women stay? And then, at that time, do they have to get out, or have you found jobs for them or something at that point? Okay. Are there any other properties that you're looking at or that you might have in mind? This is the only one that you have. And one last question, just for my benefit, those of you who are against it, would you just raise your hands, those against? Now, those that are for, raise your hands. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
No, wait, hey, listen, we ain't have this backing for, if this ain't a, for that right there, Ms. Allen had a, councilman's got a right to answer a few questions, what's called, you got your questions answered, Ms. Allen?
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
I never expected to walk into this tonight, I read over the, um, proposal, and it sounded nice, but it only indicated about three-plus acres, and the thing that's most disturbing to me, that while these lovely people who have invested so much time and effort into this mission and cause want so desperately for it to succeed, they live nowhere near it. Most of you live anywhere from thirty minutes to an hour further away, and we have all of these people who live right there, who feel that they'll be negatively impacted. I have real concerns when it's juxtaposed in that manner. I have real concerns when it's juxtaposed in that manner. I know there's a need for this sort of thing. We have the Anderson Crisis Pregnancy Center here that does quite well and performs a great mission to help those people in need. I contribute. I know a lot of others do too. But I'm very concerned when the people who are for this rezoning don't live anywhere near it and those who are concerned and most oppose it live right there. That's something that should definitely be considered. Thank you.
Dr. Parky, from the staff's recommendation, I guess you had said staff recommended yes and also the planning commission recommended yes. Do you have notes of the, of why you said yes or why the, the planning commission said yes on those?
One moment, I'll see if I have. I don't have the minutes from the planning commission meeting, but...
I'm planning commission recommended approval.
The residential character, we felt the home was compatible with the residential character indicated in the future land use map. And then in addition to that, the, there will be a variance that's required if the rezoning is approved because the group care home is an exception, would be allowed with exception. So the applicant would have to go to the board zoning appeals if this rezoning is approved.
So to understand the process, if it were approved M1, there'd still be a second step for variance to happen for, for the home to reach its ultimate goal?
Correct. The group care home is allowed with special exception in R1.
We got to pass it. If, if it passes tonight, it will have two more readings. It's three readings to make this.
Okay. And, and from, from staff's interpretation, what, do you sort of read aloud and define what M1 states is allowed?
Mr. Wood, I don't understand your question. What was it?
I had asked the, the staff had recommended yes on this project and the planning commission had recommended yes on this project. And I was curious as to what their notes were and their rationale for why they recommended yes.
Okay. But it was the advisory group that did not even meet on it?
In the, yes. The second group didn't make a quorum of the citizens.
Yeah. So, um, um, okay. Well, that's the part that gets to me, that, that we skipped a process in this thing. When the district, when the advisory group did not meet on July the 5th due to a lack of quorum. And when this type of information comes down to us like that, it is my, it is my feeling is that we should have to look at all of the entities that were involved in this type thing before it comes to us where it's going to take a decision, one way or the other, and that decision is going to fall on us. But if we don't have all the information that we need, how can we be expected to vote yes or no? How can we even be expected to take it to a, a, a second? We have to have three readings. How can we even take it to three readings? In the past, what we have done is we've said, okay, we'll just take it to three meetings because we have, we have three readings to, you know, to... But I just think that we need to start from the beginning. Let's get this thing right. Let's take it back. Let's go back and turn over every piece of rock that we need to. Because these people, I'm not through this.
He had the floor, Ms., Ms., Mr. Wood had the floor.
Mr. Wood, will you, will you yield five minutes, or three minutes to me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The whole thing is that these people come to us for real decisions. They're the ones who live it out there. They're the ones who saying it's okay with me. They're the ones who saying, no, it's not. So how are we going to get in there and split it up without having all of the information? Mr. Wood, thank you for your three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. And there was a, a lead up to my question. Has to happen and then a variance has to happen. I guess is if this home were to leave this property five years from now, what would allow to go there based on that M1 and that variance? Because there, there is a concern there. You know, whether or not you're for or against the home, there's, there is a future concern of what M1 with a variance would allow at a later date. And I was, from staff's interpretation, wanted to understand what that meant.
So permitted uses in, in the R1 district. Mr. Wood, recreational area, single-family detached dwelling, uh, single-family detached dwelling manufactured multi-section home, single-family attached dwelling, not more than two dwelling units, single-family attached dwelling, three or more dwelling units subject to provisions of Section 612. Two-family duplex, uh, home occupations are allowed, residential continuing care, retirement center, and also then uses permitted by special exception. Childcare, church, communication tower, family care home, fire station, golf course, group care home, group office development, nursing, continuing care, retirement center, police station, private recreation area, public park, recycling drop lock, school, transportation and utility easements, path carry barber shop, beauty shop, cafeteria, florist shop, newsstand, optician. That's about it. Sandwich shop. That last group is by, by special exception, including the group care, group care.
Would the special exception carry with the property? I know the zoning would carry with the property. Would the special exception carry with the property?
Believe, believe, yes.
Okay.
Could clarify that, but...
Listen, you got anything yet?
No, I'm good.
My, my, believe. And I hate it. The woman that I wish was here to speak to this is the councilman that represents this area. Fortunately, he's sick tonight, couldn't make it. But we have went through the process. You know, it's not fair to the, for the ones asking. This, this process set up for a reason. It's not fair for the people that's asking for variance or the people that wants it not to change when somebody can't get together for a meeting, draft that. That's reading the process. It says in the ordinance, it goes to the next level, planning commission, which has public hands, input and that. Then it comes ultimately, it's going to decide county council, anyway. My own thing, this is a very worthwhile thing. And but you've heard tonight, I've been through these things, in fact, I used to be on planning commission. When people get things about their property, they start, you know, hear a lot of accusations tonight. It just don't, you know, make sense. But bottom line, facts are two things. When you look at a piece of property, you need to make sure about if it is zoned or not. Because people are very, very protective about zoning areas in Anson County. I know that firsthand about changing zoning. The other thing is, is like the point Mr. Wood was trying to get, it's okay, this thing, we pass this, great endeavor, move on. Something happens in a few years, then you hear all these other things this could turn into. And we got no control over that, don't come back. It is, it is a thing. I just think people have got it right too about zoning. People very passionate about zoning and go through their things and this process to get this property zoned for a certain thing and not be. And so my recommendation is I make the motion to deny on zoning. Say, Ms. Wilson, now discussion. Allen, you got something?
I have something. He's waiting. Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the best thing in the best interest of the whole thing. We were given this thing here tonight. We, we got the information on Fri-, on Friday. We looked through it and then we came today and all the people were here and each one of them brought up how they really felt about this. And now you're saying that we go with the ones who want it or don't want it?
I said deny.
Deny.
That's right.
Okay. But that means that they don't get it either, the ones who... I, I just think, do you have all the information that's really needed to come up with that?
I do.
Well, I don't.
I, I respect that.
And that makes it, that makes it harder for me. I'm asking for more time. I'm asking for, let's go back and, and give these people another opportunity to, to both of them be heard by all of this, by all of the process that we've done. But just to sit here and say, well, I deny it. What do we deny? What do we deny? The fact that we don't want it or the fact that we want them to have it? Whatever. But I just don't think, sir, you can't speak now. Okay. I'm, I'm sorry to have to say that, but that's the way it goes here. But I just don't think that we, that we can do it like that. I think we need more time.
Ms. Allen?
Yeah, there are two things that to me weigh heavily on this. Uh, one, so, uh, I don't, I don't see where this home would be a really big problem. There's already a house there with seven children in it. Okay, if it, if it turns over to this group, there might be eight people there. Terms were used like if they get out. Well, I mean, it, it sounds like a cage or something. I, I don't think pregnant women are going to run around the neighborhood and create a whole lot of trouble. On the other hand, something that weighs very heavily on this is we are called representatives of the people. We're county council representatives. And a lot of the people out here that, as Ms. Wilson brought up, rightly so, that live right adjacent to the property, don't want it. And we have to represent these people. Like I said, I, I don't see any big problem of three acres out of 100 and the type of home you want to put on it, I think it's a worthy endeavor. But the people adjacent to it don't seem to want it. Some of the arguments are just simply nimby. Not in my backyard, period, the end. That, that's the only reason. But yet, they don't want it and we do have to represent the people of Anderson County. So I'm in a quandary on that one, but that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Is this in Councilman Waters' district? Since Councilman Waters is the elected representative of the people who live in this district, could we table it until he's in attendance?
If y'all, y'all think it's going to make a difference. Are we putting something off or if you're just kicking can down the road?
I mean, I know it can be seen as kicking can down the road, but that is their representative. I mean, I represent District 1. We're in the city of Anderson. I mean, I had welcomed the home. I think it's a great thing. But he's ultimately the one that's elected by the folks that live out there. Um, I'd, I'd be curious as to what he has to say about it. But I mean, we can, we can either vote to table or we can vote straight up.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor right now. We'll take care of that. In fact, what do we go? We go to table. All in favor, motion to deny, show hands. All opposed?
Oh, excuse me.
So the motion fails of denying of Ms. Wilson and Mr. Dunn in favor, Mr. Allen, Ms. Floyd and Mr. Wood, opposed. You got a motion?
Okay.
I second.
A motion, Mr. Wood, and a second, Ms. Floyd. All in favor, motion, show hands. So motion carries. Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I want to apologize to all of you that showed up tonight and waited to end up this way, to say we have to put it off for another two weeks. But I really think it is only fair to have the councilman here from the district that represents you. And also since the, the other board, the advisory group, didn't get to meet, you know, there are some loose ends to this thing. So I think it is in our best interest to go ahead and wait till he gets here and see what, what, what he wants to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Y'all want to take it?
Yeah, I was talking.
Well, that's not over with, Ms. Floyd. You, what you got to say?
I wanted to say something.
Well, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, folks, um, this time, try to make sure, find out why these people cannot come to the quorum so you can get your business work done. And I invite you to come back to the council meeting. Um, as you go, I know you live a distance away, but I invite you to come back to the council meetings so that you can see how things really work here. And I should do thank you for coming.
We're going now out of number 7B, 2018-027, when it's authorized in the code execution of a lease purchase agreement in amount not exceeding $5.4 million relating to the leasing and purchasing certain vehicles.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Ms. Floyd, I got it.
Mr. Chairman, I call for a recess until the people have...
We're going to take about a two-minute thing. These people get out of thing and we're going to start meeting back. We got a full agenda tonight.
You said what now?
We're going to take about, as soon as these people get out, we starting back. We just want to sit right here for a minute. These people get out.
I'm not going to sit back. I'm going to get up.
You go ahead and do what you need to do.
Thank you. Oh, boy.
Hey, Tommy. On that table thing, do we need to have a timeframe on that?
Y'all said two weeks. Y'all said next meeting.
Yeah.
That's what, thanks, so it's next meeting.
The next meeting.
That's right. And if Mr. Waters ain't here then...
Yeah, well, then we got to do something.
And, and in fact, I think that's the reason he wasn't here tonight.
I think he might be.
Rest. Will you help him get them out? Get, get them out. Let's get this meeting going. Let's get this meeting. Okay, Ms. Davis?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
7B, 2018-027, ordinance authorized me execution of lease purchase agreement amount not exceed $5.4 million relating to the leasing and purchasing of certain vehicles, equipment, personal property, execution necessary documents and closing papers. This was in our budget. This is just putting, putting this forward. We have motion, move this forward. Motion, Ms. Wilson, have a second. Say, Mr. Allen, any discussion?
May I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we anticipating about $100,000 to issue the bond?
It's actually going to be closer to 50,000 to 60,000. They just put a not to exceed, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor, motion, show hands. Pose like sign, extension, so the motion carries. Number 7C, 2018-028, when it's authorized in the addition of Bellocell LLC's response to the certain fee agreement dated as December 1st, 2012, for Anson County Cyclone and Sergeant Metals. I think this is just a paperwork thing. We have motion, move this forward. Ms. Wilson, have a second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Allen, any discussion?
Yes, what's a paperwork thing?
Uh, Mr. Harmon, you clear this up for her.
Mr. Harmon, I noticed that this is Sergeant Metal Fabrications. I think we had something else done in this particular year, 2018. Did we not see Sergeant Metals? Weren't they asking for something again this year?
No, ma'am, not this year. We have done it in the recent past. I don't have the exact date. But basically what this is, Mr. Tim Hayden is running this. He is purchasing the business from his father. And so this is just allowing that to proceed. It does not change the terms of the agreement in any way.
Okay, but Mr. Burns, you said in, this was in the recent, what did you say?
In the recent past. I do not believe it was this year. I think it was three or four years ago.
Oh, no, 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 no. Uh-uh. Because this came up either the end of last year? We were talking about Sergeant Metals before? It was, it was at the end of last fiscal year? Maybe before Christmas or something?
At that time, I believe we were talking about lawless metals. But I could be correct.
About what?
Lawless metals. But I could be corrected.
Well, okay, well, I could be corrected as well. I'm not sure. But I know it was a metal fabrication, if I was saying one. So this time that it's trying to change the ownership of it or move it over to... Okay, good. Good, good.
All in favor, the motion, show hands. All opposed, like signs, so the motion carries now. We're going item number E, 2018, dash 034, ordinance authorizing extension of the term on a certain lease agreement by between Anson County Cyclone and BMW Manufacturing Company, LLC, dated September 1st, 1998.
Um, he's...
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had an X, but D, go back to D, 2018, dash 032, ordinance to return real property located on Pyramid Dairy Road, uh, tax map number 095, dash 00, dash 09, dash 012, to Atlanta Bakery Company, due to the Anson County by Atlanta Bakery Company Incorporated, September 21st, 1981, facilitate industrial development revenue bond project. My understanding correct from Mr. Harmon, what this is, is a name of the, our name, it's Anson County's name, and it gets the off title, and that's what these are trying to clear it up, get it back like it's supposed to be.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. The, the property is in the name of the county because of a 1981, um, um, project, and it, back at that time, for economic development, those projects had to be in the name of the county to, uh, facilitate an industrial development revenue bond issue. This, this matter will simply clear up our real property records and put the title back in Atlanta Bread Company's name.
Thank you. We have motion move this. Motion, Ms. Wilson, have a second. Mr. Allen, further discussion?
Yes. Um, Mr. Harmon, um, this thing here now, uh, it was, the company, the property was owned by Atlanta Bakery Company, and they did it to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we're getting ready to do it back to them.
That's correct.
Why?
It, it, well, it had to be in the county's name to facilitate an, a, an industrial development revenue bond project back in 1981.
Well, yeah.
The county, the county had the whole title under the state law at that time. Now, this is prior to the FLO Act and, and what, the way we do economic development projects now.
Mm-hmm.
They have been paying taxes all along, uh, on this property, and this will just get it back in the company's name and, and clear up our real property records in the process.
Okay, uh, now, uh, when they take, um, when, when they take the property back, are they gonna use it for a purpose, or just what's the purpose of them taking it back other than for the tax purposes?
They operate a bakery there. You probably know it better as the old Kroger Bakery.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Somebody should have said, and they say it's on Pyramid Dairy Road. Um, is that thing on Pyramid Dairy Road?
Uh, it, it's, it's practically across the street from where the TTI property is out there, and that's, that property is on Pyramid Dairy Road.
Okay, all right.
Any more discussion?
Uh, Mr. Harmon, thank you so much.
All in favor, the motion, show hands. We're going item 7E, 2018, dash 034, ordinance authorizing extension of the term under the certain lease agreement by between Anson County Cyclone and BMW Manufacturing Company, LLC, as of September 1st, 1998, amendment of such lease agreement to reflect such extension. We have motion move this forward?
A moved.
Motion, Ms. Wilson, have a second. Mr. Allen, any discussion?
Yes. I need that explained to me as well. Uh, Mr., um, um, Harmon?
Yes, ma'am.
I need your help again. It's not that I don't understand what's going on, but I don't, because, uh, all they sent me was stuff to read. I don't, can't ask, can't questions, and I don't know about the meetings that they're having when they discuss this. So we're gonna have to discuss it now for me, and for those who are in our audience, uh, or on TV, who's interested in knowing what's going on in Anderson. Would you please explain that?
Yes, Ms. Floyd. Uh, the, the original fee and lieu agreement, uh, in this matter, uh, was based upon the lease, uh, of equipment, um, uh, by BMW to a number of Anderson County businesses who made parts for, for the BMW plant over in Spartanburg County. What this ordinance does is allow an extension of that lease agreement for an additional 10 years because of a change, uh, in the state law that, that allows this to extend further, uh, into the future.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Wilson.
So the, um, military is still locked in at the current level. It will just continue, is that right?
Ye- yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I believe that is correct. It, it, nothing's changing in, in the fee agreement itself.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, the motion, show hands. Opposed, like signs, so the motion carries now. Ms. Wilson, I would, uh, now make motion to move executive session for economic development projects. Put that in form of motion.
Second.
Say, Ms. Wilson, all in favor, show hands. Opposed, extension, so the motion carries. We got a motion, come out, executive session.
Chairman, may I make the motion that we come out of executive session, received information in economic development projects?
Motion, Ms. Wilson, have a second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Allen, all in favor, the motion, show hands. Like signs, so the motion carries. Do we have a, uh, motion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding to facilitate construction of a road needed for the development of the TTI corporate campus and innovation center.
Have motion, Mr. Wooton, have a second.
Second.
Say, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, the motion, show hands. Motion carries. We're going now the item number 9A. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
I voted, um, um, I'm not voting against it, not voting for it.
Show the record, show Ms. Floyd, but stands.
Yeah, that's the word.
Moving on, number 9A. Bid appealed. 9818, dash 053, request qualification for bike construction and engine inspection services. Uh, who's got this? Mr.?
What this is? What this is, Mr. Chairman, is to hire Davis and Floyd to inspect the work that is going to be done on the TTI road.
Ma'am, we have, uh, we have motion move this?
A moved.
Motion, Ms. Wilson, have a second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Allen, any discussion? All in favor, the motion, show hands. All opposed, extensions, so the motion carries. We're going item number 9B, Project NASA Road Construction.
To, uh, staff recommends Morgan Corporation, $5,545,278.50, and this is for the construction of the road, TTI.
We have motion?
A moved.
Ms. Wilson, second. Mr. Allen, any discussion? All in favor, the motion, show hands. Opposed, like signs, so the motion carries. Annually moving on to item C, 19, dash 001, installation of sewer line for the Orthrex project.
Yes, sir. Staff recommends, uh, recommendation to, uh, Dillard excavating $438,615 for this project.
We have, we have a motion?
A moved.
Motion, Ms. Wilson, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Allen, any discussion?
Can I quickly point out that this is really interesting? There was, gosh, more than a $200,000 spread there, so our bidding for procedures are really working well now. I'm very glad to see that.
Ms. Floyd?
Um, um, I want to get the name clear, Mr. Harmon, on the name of this thing. Is it Orthrex Project?
Orthrex. Orthrex. Yes, ma'am.
Then that's the name of the project, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Orthrex, okay. All right. It's so close to another word that, um, all right, thank you.
All in favor, the motion, show hands. All opposed, like signs, so the motion carries now. Moving on, item number 10. This is just follow up, Bill, Ms. Wilson, I mean, this, uh, Davis, full resolution pressing teaching of Anson County Council to cause Anson County Cyclone to be reimbursed proceeds of tax exempt obligations in connection with the lease purchase transaction. We have motion move this forward?
Moved.
Motion, Ms. Wilson, have a second. Say, Mr. Allen, any discussion?
Yes, please. Mr. Harmon, would you please explain, uh, what this resolution is all about? Of tax exempt obligations in connection with a lease of purchase transaction, what is it all about?
It's, it's the, uh, uh, lease purchase, uh, arrangement that we, I believe we talked about earlier, uh, in the, in the meeting. Uh, item 7B, allow us to, to recover, um, uh, any monies that, that we expend in, in getting the bond, um, put in place.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All in favor, the motion, show hands. Like signs, so the motion carries now. Moving on, item number 10, B, 2018, dash 03, resolution to express the intention of Anson County, Council of Anson County, to cause Anson County Cyclone to be reimbursed proceeds of tax exempt obligations in connection with solid waste revenue bond transaction. We have motion move this forward?
So moved. Um, and may I point out, Mr. Chairman, that the Planning and Public Works Committee, and then the Finance Committee, approved these to come to council.
Thank you.
Recommended. And may I give a quick...
Yes, ma'am.
...pointing this, um, just a very quick, um, update. The 2008 special source revenue bond is coming off in solid waste. We've had the need to expand at the Star C and D landfill, and it's going to cost prox- approximately 2.4 million. There was a great deal of discussion and some numbers given. Um, part of the discussion was that what if we look at obtaining a mulcher now, a chipper and mulcher, and stockpile that instead of having to bury it? And, um, apparently the quality of the machinery is greatly improved, and Mr. Smith is investigating that. So we recommended that the bond be set to include that expense instead of sending out two bond issuance. Short-term, um, the mulcher is expensive, but long-term, it should be very helpful in reducing the, what's buried in the landfill, and, um, probably provide some mulch for citizens as well as the county for mulching properties. The C and D landfill would, um, this would cover a seven-acre extension and would be far less expensive in the long run to have that, um, in the county's possession. And apparently, there's been some preliminary, um, conversation with D-HAC and engineers to give us these numbers. So this came, comes to our council with the recommendation from the Planning and Public Works Committee to approve this bond.
Do we have motion? Ms. Wilson, have a second.
Second.
Say, Mr. Allen, any discussion?
Yes.
Floyd?
Now, um, here's what I've been hearing, that, okay, first of all, what is this bond supposed to do? What is it supposed to, um, be for? Using the preposition at the end of the sentence.
It, it would be for some improvements to the Star landfill site, and also allow the purchase of... and also allow the purchase of, of some equipment that Ms. Wilson mentioned.
Okay, but Mr. Harmon, about the equipment, I heard that it was going to be a machine that would tear up the wood and stuff to use it for, um, mulch.
Mulch.
But I heard that that thing was gonna cost about five million dollars.
Uh, currently, Mr. Greg Smith is getting prices. I don't believe Mr. Smith has received a price of five million dollars.
Well, I hope not, but that was just rumors going around, five million?
Five million dollar chipper is a rumor going around, but I do believe that as he does his research, he's finding out they may be a bit more expensive.
They what now?
They may be a bit more expensive.
But not five million dollars expensive? Okay, well, um, you saying no, how do you know?
I know all.
You know all, okay. I know what I hear, okay. But anyway, um, this is what I'm hearing, that it was, um, it was gonna cost five million dollars, and it was nothing but, uh, uh, equipment that would turn trees and stuff. And they said that the mulch would be free for the people of Anderson County. It won't be buried at the landfill, is that true?
Heard that correctly. Greenville County has, uh, free mulch for some of their citizens on specified days. They can come there and they can pick it up after the mulch has dried out and has been treated. Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm, and that, that part is true, but not five million. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All in favor of the motion, show hands. Opposed light signs, motion carries, nationally. Moving on to number ten C, twenty eighteen dash zero four three, resolution authorizing, under certain conditions, the execution delivered by Anderson County, South Carolina, infrastructure credit agreement with the company known to the county as project accommodation. Respect to a commercial project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fee and lieu of taxes. Whereby a project accommodation will be provided certain credits against fee payments and reimbursements and investments and related qualified infrastructure. This is what we just went into executive session. One of the things talked about, we have a motion, move this forward.
They move.
Motion, Mr. Allen, second, Ms. Wilson, any discussion?
Can you quickly point out, um, in years past, I was very vehemently opposed to using this structure for commercial projects, but most of my reluctance dealt with the capabilities of the people who proposed those projects, and it seemed like it was greatly pie in the sky. So this is probably the first time I've voted for something that looks stronger in the commercial realm. Thank you.
Have a motion, move this forward, show hands. Motion carries, nationally, moving on to item number eleven. Report from the Planning and Public Works Committee meeting held July thirteenth. Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've just heard the C and D landfill proposal and the bond that accompanied that. Um, we had a discussion on the sewer study. And effective, um, July first of this year, City of Anderson increased the cost incrementally for five years for sewer treatment. You'll remember that I was very concerned about those open-ended, um, forever agreements with the City of Anderson, and it's coming back to haunt us because the city's increasing the cost because of a D, of an EPA consent order, which obviously is the city's problem. They made, had some violations, but we get to pay more than our fair share of that. You should have, before you, um, or in your cubby this past few weeks, the price will go from two thirty-seven per thousand gallons to three thirty-one per thousand gallons. So it will increase the cost for sewer enterprise fund, and like solid waste, they're enterprise funds, and they're intended to be run more business-like and reporting the cost. And in this case, these costs will be transferred to the actual users, and we'll have to pass it along as it comes to the county. So that was basically the long and the short of it, for your information.
Um, Mr., Mr. Burns, I have a question for you. Do we still have a copy somewhere of the, um, the sewer, sewer, not the study, but the actual contract?
We do.
That was signed years before any of us got here.
We have the latest sewer contract, and it, it goes back some years. Yes, ma'am, we have a copy of that.
Okay, I would like to see that, okay? Because, um, now, I'm on a different subject, but it's still the storm, I mean, it's still the sewer study, okay? Out of that sewer money, um, well, out of the sewer study, they're gonna probably talk about putting more money in the sewer project.
I don't believe that this, and I think the cost of treatment that the city is facing is causing this, because as you know, the city is under a consent order.
Mm-hmm.
They have been ordered, as other cities have, to perform certain work
Mm-hmm.
or face penalties, and I think these funds are going to be addressing that list that the city must attack.
Okay, all right. Now, we've heard about the list, and we, and we know all about the history of the sewer thing, but there's something in that sewer thing that bothers me. Storm water comes out of sewer, of that sewer.
That has nothing to do with.
That's what I know, it does not.
No, ma'am.
Not a thing. This is the city's thing, what they, what they probably get us to do, what they say, but.
Plants, that's what this is for.
I know, I know. But while we are talking about sewer, also, the storm water comes out of the sewer thing, right, that we have.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burns, I think that you and I need to sit down and look at that sewer thing. Uh, the sewer referendum held back long before we were even thought of about coming up here, okay?
Remember it well.
Yeah, I remember it too, and I've been reading a lot about it too. But I think that we need to go back before we go up to this discussion on the sewer study. We need to go back and look at that, you and I.
No problem.
Okay, good, thank you.
Ms. Wilson, have anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven. I'm sorry, number twelve, report from the Public Safety Committee meeting held July thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Uh, first, uh, twelve A's review of the MOE for dispatch. We all have a copy of, and what this is, is, uh, having a sign agreement where, uh, Mad Shore, Greg Shore's, uh, uh, Mad Shore will have a dispatch place in our central dispatch thing. And, uh, by central dispatch, EMS director offers out that this will benefit us and help us have a smoother transition, uh, on our EMS calls. This does come from the Public Safety Committee, doesn't need a second. Are there any discussion? Any note, all in favor of the motion, show hands. All opposed, intentions? Third motion carries, nationally.
All opposed, excuse me.
Third motion carries, Mr. Allen, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Wooten, Ms. Wilson in favor, and Ms. Floyd opposes. Moving on, um, number nine, oh, twelve, I'm sorry, twelve B, review of the contractual agreement, EMS contractual agreements attached. Hate this just a lightly, Mr. Harmon.
Yes, this would be, uh, an extension to the current EMS contracts that we have with, with providers, um, in the county. Uh, the, the, um, uh, rescue squads and, and also the one for Med Shore uh, here in, in the city area. There is one, uh, uh, that will be, uh, that is out for an RFP, and that is the Williamson area. I think, I think those, uh, bids are due in.
Thursday.
This coming Thursday.
Thirty.
Thank you, again, this comes from the Public Safety Committee, doesn't need a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, show hands. Third motion carries, nationally. Moving on to item thirteen, report from the Finance Committee meeting uh, held July thirteenth, the state should help out visit, oh, Mr. Burns.
Mr. Chairman, I will start, and Mr. Robert Carroll can assist me.
Okay.
We already discussed the landfill expansion, that's been disposed of. Number two, the Foothills Community Foundation Dog Park Agreement will allow us to place funds. We've already collected fifteen thousand dollars for the establishment of a dog park at Paws, and this is just a repository to watch that money, and people make contributions, and it will be tax deductible. That's what that is in a nutshell.
Mr. Winnie, the board on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Wait, this coming from the Finance Committee, doesn't need a second or any discussion?
Uh, we're saying here, um, Mr. Burns, that the, uh, um, this is the money that we're going to use to put a dog park up at the.
At Paws.
Uh, well, let's just call it what it is right now, okay? Animal shelter, the animal, uh, what do we call it? Animal shelter.
Paws or the animal shelter.
Yeah, uh-huh, but you see, a lot of people don't know Paws.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm calling it what it is, the animal shelter, that's what it's about, right? Putting a, uh, a dog park, even though we only, we already have one dog, dog park.
Yes, ma'am.
We gonna put another dog park.
We have, is that we have a very small dog park, and we are taking private contributions, which the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that's right.
We are not using any county money.
County money, that's right.
For establishing that dog park.
Yeah.
Make it larger.
Yeah, I knew about that, the fact we weren't taking any money, okay? Thank you for that. Okay.
Anybody else? All in favor of the motion, show hands. First, motion carries, nationally. Mr. Carroll, bids, uh, five one fifty for the courthouse.
Yes, sir, uh, we put this out for bid, and staff recommends award to Altech for one hundred seventy thousand dollars.
We have, uh, a motion from the Finance Committee, doesn't need a second or any discussion. All in favor of the motion, show hands. All opposed, intentions? Third motion carries.
You didn't ask for questions.
Asked for discussion.
No, you, I didn't hear you answer.
Sorry, but we did. Uh, moving on to, uh, airport tunnel update.
Yeah, this is just an update, sir. You know, uh, we've taken bids a good while back, uh, two point six nine two nine billion dollars, and, uh, we have now confirmed approval of all funding from the, through the ACOG and Department of Commerce and other sources, and, uh, we're moving forward with this construction. It has been awarded to Laser Construction, and we expect, uh, construction to, to begin in approximately a week, week and a half.
Moving on to the L E M P G grant, Davis.
The Sheriff's Department, David Baker, he submits this annually, and we'll get seventy-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars back. We'll get some back, fifty-five thousand, four four six for personnel. It's for cert supplies and the supplies that the, the office uses, and a little bit of travel. The match is salaries that we already pay to the personnel in that department.
Comes from the Finance Committee, again, doesn't need a second, any discussion?
Yes. Ms. Davis, what is L E M P G? What does it stand for?
Local Emergency Management Planning Grant.
Local Emergency.
Management Planning.
Management.
Yes, ma'am.
Grant, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, show hands. Opposed light signs, motion carries, nationally. That transfer, does anybody have any questions or anything coming, coming from the Finance Meeting? Uh, it, uh, doesn't need a second, but if anybody got any questions, now's time to bring it up, find out. Had all weekend, look at it, so anybody got anything? All in favor of the motion, show hands. Third motion carries, nationally. Now, we're gonna be, uh, moving on to, uh, item number fourteen, report from Parks and Recreation Ad Hoc Committee meeting held July nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Camera move, move.
Uh, yes, and a follow-up to the Park and Rec Ad Hoc meeting and subsequently the Special Call meeting, which sort of went in conjunction with each other on topics. Uh, basically, we went to the A tax budget, and that's just the accommodation tax. So we were able to collect, um, money from the hotels when out-of-towners come and stay, and then, and then allocate that money to, to improvements within the county. So we went across the different districts, and, you know, there's, there's an item with Dolly Cooper Park. There's, you know, we're looking at repaving at the Civic Center. We're looking at making improvements at Broadway Lake. We're, um, we're taking different items and matching the grant, um, for Green Pond Landing. And so we had a discussion on, on how that moves forward, different council people, um, depending on their district, said, hey, I'd like to see things work this way, and I'd like the timing to work out this way. So it was a good meeting in that regard, and the fact that, uh, all districts were receiving money to it, and, uh, we had attendance, um, greater than just the, the committee. We had a lot of buy-in there, and I really appreciate everybody's attendance. Um, the hospitality referendum, we passed in committee to take to full council that was subsequently taken up in the Special Call meeting for council. And basically, we, um, we voted to take to the ballot a non-binding, which just means informational, a non-binding referendum to ask the people of Anderson County in an unincorporated area, so outside of the City of Anderson, outside of the town of Pendleton, an unincorporated area, you know, could two cents be on, um, going out to eat in an effort to promote tourism, um, do initiatives with our parks, create quality of life activities that people would enjoy? So that, um, passed in, in the Special, um, Call meeting, and so that'll be on the ballot, um, this fall, and it'll basically give us information from the people of Anderson, and we can look at district and areas of town and sort of see how they feel about that topic and, and give us the, give us the go-ahead, or possibly give us not the go-ahead to have that conversation. Um, the third thing was, um, it's park streamlining recommendations. Uh, the Parks and Rec, um, Department have divided up the parks by district, and so the council members are looking at their parks and sort of saying, hey, how can we make these better? How can we be more efficient in the resources? If we were to get new revenue in the future to do different initiatives, we want to make sure that we're, uh, we're being good stewards of the current revenue that we have, and that, um, we're, we're doing that correctly. Um, one of the couple of things that've come up multiple times is the idea that, you know, businesses will maybe would participate in a park, um, so, and maybe a sponsorship opportunity. Also, working with community groups to take ownership of their local parks in an effort, you know, to deter crime, keep it clean, um, have community buy-in, but at the same time, have conversations with the community of, you know, what kind of things are you looking for in your neighborhoods and your community that would, would improve quality of life? So that's an update from the Parks and Recreation Ad Hoc Committee, and then the subsequent, uh, Special Call meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Wooten. Moving on, uh, now, a report from the Public Safety Committee meeting held August the twelfth, twenty eighteen. Uh, Mr. Graham couldn't be here, and, uh, so Miss Lacy's out of town too. The night could be, and, uh, very lucky. Appreciate, uh, Ms. Casey stepping in for her, and she's gonna do the report for the Public Safety, we appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry you guys are stuck with me. Um, but what you, council, you should have the data mining presentation that was presented to the Public Safety Committee, um, as of last week. Uh, basically, this is an overview of the data that our criminal justice stakeholders have collected over the past four months. Uh, so we presented to the Public Safety Committee last week. We presented to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council yesterday, uh, which was open to the public, and we did have the public there uh, to preview the material, so that is included in your packet, and I'm here to answer any questions for that. Have any?
May I get anything from Case on that subject?
Okay, I'll, yes, ma'am.
Uh, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council data overview.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, that's number A. Uh, I don't have that in my, was it supposed to be in there?
I can provide you a copy.
Okay, well, I'm gonna need one, because that's not in my book here. I can, um, show you, um, there is agenda thing that y'all have, A. Well, may I have my own copy, please? Later, thank you.
Follow-up.
Yes, for anybody who is not able to attend the meeting that we had yesterday, there are two follow-up sessions where I will re-preview that information on the sixteenth. Uh, the first one from nine to ten thirty, for anybody that's interested and open to the public. Um, and the second one will be from two to three thirty on that same day in the Administrator's Conference Room. It is on the sixteenth, which is a Thursday, from nine to ten thirty, and then again in the afternoon from two to three thirty, and public is welcome.
Is this the one that you sent me information to that I never received? And we talked about it?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
The one of that mission?
Okay, Case, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Um, we also have the stepping up initiative, which is a national initiative to reduce the number of individuals in our. Yes, sir. Um, we also have the Stepping Up Initiative, which is a national initiative to reduce the number of individuals in our detention center with mental illness. Currently, across the nation, there are over four hundred and fifty jurisdictions that have signed up for the Stepping Up Initiative. Um, as far as the upstate is concerned, uh, Greenville County, Pickens County, and Spartanburg Counties are the ones closest to us that have joined the initiative. Okay, and then our last one is the Data Driven Justice Initiative. Um, there are over a hundred and fifty jurisdictions across the nation that have signed up for this. This is the county committing to addressing issues throughout the criminal justice system in a very data-driven way. So we won't be relying on personal experience or anecdote, we will look at the data, uh, very transparently and honestly, and we will make very purposeful decisions to improve any inefficiencies in our system.
Appreciate the report, Casey, appreciate the fine work done on it. Yes, sir.
You might, might note that the, uh, Stepping Up Initiative is a resolution which everyone has in their packets, and we would request...
Of that.
Of that.
Request what, ma'am?
Request approval of the Stepping Up Initiative.
We have a, uh, do we have a motion to move that?
I make a motion to move that forward.
Second, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, the motion show hands?
Hold it, wait, wait, wait. You asking us to sign something tonight? That we...
Everybody, everybody had it in their council.
It's in, in the packet, in the book.
I have it, I know that. But, uh, what, the thing is, that, um, what's, what's, what's it about, you know, Mr. Burns? Um, I just, we just need more information. We come to these meetings, and we don't get all of the news or whatever, and then we're asked to sign things that, that, uh, we don't know what it is. I know she said stepping up, she did tell me she, she sent me a message, but she sent it to the wrong place, I didn't get to the meeting. Um, and I'm just supposed to just go in and sign this now for what?
I'll be happy to read it.
No, I can read myself, I'm pretty good at it, too. But, um, but the thing is, you know, why am I doing this? What is it gonna be, uh? Why is this necessary? Why must I sign it?
So the Stepping Up Initiative acknowledges that currently nationwide, there are over two hundred million individuals in our detention centers, jails, and prisons with mental illness, sometimes with co-uh, co-occurring substance use disorders, and really making sure that we are focusing on providing the appropriate services to these individuals. Being in the detention center, uh, does not break that cycle, nor provide them with the needed services. So this is an acknowledgement that we, as a county, will focus on ensuring that these individuals receive the attention and the treatment that they need versus just repeating through the system itself.
Okay, so, um, um, that part that says, therefore be it resolved, would you do that for me, please?
Mm-hmm.
That's the crux of what we're signing. Therefore be it resolved. Anderson County hereby signs on to the call to action to safely reduce the number of individuals in our county council jails with mental illness and commits to sharing lessons learned with others throughout the state. Use of data-driven decisions across multiple agencies will drive innovative strategies to ensure high level of care of mental illness and others' families, okay? And this has to be signed tonight.
It would be helpful for us to be part of this initiative, because primarily, what it is, is an information sharing process. And the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, one of the things they're looking at very seriously is the number of mentally challenged people who are in our jail system, and their alternatives such as a mental health court and other things. All of these were discussed yesterday in the meeting, Mr. Allen, you, it were probably a better spokesperson for what happened than I am.
Well, I wasn't at the meeting yesterday, they sent it to the wrong place, I didn't have it, but, uh, after I have read it, I don't have a problem with signing it, and then I thank you.
All in favor, the motion, show hands?
Where is the one?
You, you in favor, Tom? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have it?
No.
It'd be like any other thing, we get it to come through, the clerk, the court, to come through to sign. Does anyone have any appointments for tonight? That's not on the list, somewhere or another fell through the cracks? Being here, no one will go by, uh, request, Mr. Allen?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, I, I don't have anything out of my recreation account, but I have talked to the roads and bridges people, and I've had a request from the Townville Fire Department to, uh, repave their parking lot out there, patch it, seal it, and re-stripe it. And I've talked with Mr. Hopkins, and I'd like to move, uh, ten thousand dollars out of my paving account for the Townville Fire Department, so that that, um, that project can be completed out there.
Have motion, Mr. Allen, that needs a second. Second, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Allen's motion, show hands? Oppose, so the motion carries? Anything else?
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Floyd?
Yes, um, to the Anderson Jet Track Club. Uh, they didn't put District Two here, they have Three and Seven. Um, I would like to allocate a thousand dollars. That, uh, I'll, I'd like to do it all at one time, okay? Uh, to Broadway, um, the family group of Broadway Lake, having their yearly, um, fee show and everything else. I would like to allocate from District Two's, uh, account, fifteen hundred dollars for that. Okay? Um, from the, um, hmm, from District Two account, I also have three more. Um, two, I'm gonna have to wait, the third one is the, um, the organization, they have the Greek Festival. I'd like to out, they have written and asked for support, and, uh, I would like to allocate a thousand dollars for the, um, for that Greek festival. All of these come under the heads of Recreation. Uh, I will come back with the, um, the dog thing, and the, um, and some money for recreational activities for the blind at the next meeting. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Have motion, Ms. Floyd, second, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, the motion show hands? Those light signs, the motion carries nationally. Mr. Wood?
Uh, yes, I'd like to allocate fifteen hundred dollars to the upstate chapter of the American Red Cross. This is for their yearly, uh, tennis tournament at Cardinal Racquet Club, that's, um, in District One. Um, proceeds go to Red Cross, um, charities, and I'd put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Second, motion, Mr. Wood, and second, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, the motion show hands? So the motion carries nationally, anything else, Ms. Wood?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, from District Seven's Recreation Account, please appropriate, um, five thousand dollars for the Honey Path Fire and EMS, um, personal protective equipment need, and also three hundred dollars to the Anderson Jet Track Club. That's in the form of a motion.
Have motion, Ms. Wilson, have second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Allen, any discussion? All in favor, the motion show hands? Light signs, the motion carries nationally. Moving on, item eighteen, Administrator's Report.
Nothing in this time, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on, item nineteen, says a comment, Ms. Harmon, you called a name, please address the chair, you got three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, we have one citizen signed up, Frank Presley.
Last week, I brought a, a matter to the attention of the council regarding the pawn industry in this county, and, uh, I've since then sent an email to each and every one of you, Ms. Harmon, Burns, and... Uh, that details, um, a copy of the pawn statement from the back of a pawn ticket that shows the language that allows them to charge the exorbitant rate that they charge our senior citizens. I hope all of y'all will get behind us, and, and that we can make a change in the local ordinance so that our senior citizens are not taken advantage of in this fashion. Thank you.
Ms. Harmon?
No one else has signed up.
Uh, moving on, motion against me, Mr. Allen?
I have none at this time.
Ms. Floyd?
Um, I have some, okay, um, you know, when I get up here to do the best that I can, I have the feeling that some folks, uh, get upset by my questioning.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, yeah. Get upset by my question, no, not you. But, uh, it's not you, but, uh, you're gonna have to understand some here to represent twenty-two thousand people in Anderson County, and they voted for me to come up here to ask questions. They realize that I have a voice, uh, that I can talk, and that I will. So when you get upset because I ask a lot of questions, um, kind of like, uh, just think about it, I'm not caring about you or how you feel, I'm worried about my, the people, the black, the white, and the blue people that I represent, and what they need to know. Sometimes when I ask the questions, I know the answer, but it's not clear. And if it's not clear to me, then it can't be clear to you either. And when I ask them to re, please explain something, I'm doing that more for you, for the people that are watching on TV and the people out there than I am for myself. Because if you come here day in and day out, are you watching this, and you don't understand what we're talking about up here, then why are you here? And why are you a county tax-paying person? If they don't fix it so you can understand what is going on, what we're trying to say. So when I ask a question, um, uh, don't get mad at me because I'm smart, you know? Just, just help me explain it to the people what I'm talking about. Because I will ask questions, and I surely thank you for listening.
Wood?
Uh, I just want to say there's a, there's a great event this past week at the Anderson Library, I took my son to Comic-Con. He, he enjoys art, and it's amazing to me, um, Mitch and everything, and whether it be sports programming or the partner entertainment programming, uh, these are the kind of things that bring a good amount of people out in the community. Uh, I think it's a good thing for the community, and it was well done by the library. That's all, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Well, in addition to that, you should have been at the Jenny Irwin Library down in Honey Path last week. They have almost tripled the, um, children coming through for the school number reading program, that was exciting. And today, uh, we went down to rename the Honey Path Free Clinic to the Bob and Renee McCormick Free Clinic. Those are lovely people who did a lot and continue to do a lot in our community. And I wanted to, um, point out, we'll be, I'm gonna be trying to schedule, um, town hall meetings in my district dealing with a number of issues, including the hospitality referendum and so forth. Wanted to make sure we had the written, um, paperwork that I'd like to be able to hand out to, that people will know what it can and can't be used for, and the actual questions. And, um, we've got a lot of things going on, it's especially nice to have such good people. Thank you.
Thanks, Wilson. Uh, Phil mentioned, started meeting, Mr. Graham couldn't be here tonight, he's out of town, and Mr. Waters is, uh, under the weather, so those two out. Want to thank, uh, fellow council members for taking time, um, coming to the, we said, last council meeting, I said we'd probably have to have a meeting in between to come to the special call meeting. Been taken care of for the people of Anderson County. Also want to thank council members for, uh, like, the night, having a lot to go over, getting through it, because you done your homework before the meeting, and you, uh, go through it and get your information, you study it, you ask questions when the time, time be it. Uh, we've got plenty of time, and I do appreciate that. Council members, be dismissed.